Good morning. It is now 10:03. County Commission is in session. All three county commissioners are here. I ask that you rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'd like to welcome everyone. Please put your phone on numb or quiet or whatever we want to call it. Numb. Okay. We will now have the county administrator do consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you doing? Welcome back.
Thank you. We have 15 exoneration's for $2,920.32. Vouchers for General County Fund, $292,660.45. 911-216-11. Chestnut Ridge Park, $499.54. Mason Dixon Park, $75. Assessors valuation, $442.19. General County Fund purchasing card vouchers, $14,443.72. Magistrate Court, $26.64. Home confinement, $9,695.74. Mason Dixon Park, $26.64. Assessors valuation, $154.98. For a voucher total of $318,241.01. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Weststrom Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, the Mon County Development Authority, the Mon County Building Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board. Fiduciary orders for October 3, 2018. Statement of services for George Armistead in the Virginia Fusco Estate and also the Donna Wymer Estate. A statement of services for Lynn Crane for the John Fodor Estate. And then we also have a petition in the estate of Mary Margaret Lopez for the removal of the executor that was sent to me yesterday by the estate department. And so if you all would like to take a week to look over that and then maybe next week you can decide whether or not you want to set up a hearing or if you want to appoint or refer to a fiduciary commissioner.
Would like to split the motion, so let's do everything but that fiduciary. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now let's talk about the fiduciary report. What is the interest of the commission?
To delay it one week, please. Make that motion.
Second. Proper move in second to delay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay? Is that your?
Yes.
Okay. Good. At this time, we have introduction of new personnel and employees. Is there anyone who's going to come down here?
Donna. Donna's here for Jeanne.
Oh, Donna. Okay. I apologize. Morning.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming to meet our new hires. I mean, we had no idea what was going to happen.
I didn't realize you have such a following.
This is our new employee, Zach Fanock. And he started on Monday. And he is going, we are going to be teaching him everything that we know, which may or may not be a lot, not really sure. But we're happy to have him on board. So if you have any questions for him or us.
Move to approve. Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Zach, I do want to warn you, you work with a very ornery group of women. I'm aware of the fact that she told you you had to have a presentation for us.
Well, I had only prepared a 15 in PowerPoint. So I didn't, you know.
And for those of you who don't know, you went to see one of the best fiddle players in Mooreville Town, Montague. Oh, you have not seen it.
Really?
Do you still play in a band or do you do it individually?
Right now, I'm just doing private instruction, private lessons right now.
Folks, amazing. Just simply amazing. It's.
Well, sincerely, you couldn't work with a better group of people.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everyone.
Take care.
Now you can go back to work.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Okay. Now we have two extra seats. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other new employees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Seeing none. Okay. At this time, we will open up to comments from the public. At this time, what you will do is come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and then you will have three minutes to address any issue you would like. Feel free to come up. Who would like to go first? Sure. Okay. Oh, we have two. Oh, great. This is even better. We've never had this before. Okay.
Good morning. My name is Bryson Bennett. I'm the senior class president at Trinity Christian School, 200 Trinity Way, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26508. And this is Daniel Woods, voice of Trinity with our question to the committee.
Okay.
I'm Daniel Woods, 253 Donna Avenue, Morgantown, 26505. So our question is, because there have been several proposals recently, such as levy for a new ice rink for new recreation facilities in the county, our question is, with many of us driving ourselves around town now, how will this affect county infrastructure? And with many of us getting our first jobs and joining the tax base, how will this affect taxes on county citizens?
As policy, we will not respond until the end when doing commissioners' report, we will give you a response to that. But we thank you for your, for being here. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Clifford, 145 South High Street. I am a local attorney and a concerned citizen to addressing this committee or commission. Unfortunately, as an attorney, it's hard for me to say anything in under three minutes. It's practically impossible. But what I want to address today is I've been dealing with the city council for quite a not while now. And my main concerns are efficiency and transparency. They're really kind of, I think, the core of what our local government should strive for. And I, across my desk came this contract with the Novak Consulting Group for a mediation slash workshop for all the county and municipalities to get together at the price of $12,500 for a six-hour workshop. Now, in my concern for efficiency, I think that $12,500 for six hours seems like a lot of money for a consultant. However, if we can get $12,500 worth of value out of that, I have no problem with it. And I hope we can. But that leads to my second concern, which is transparency. And it's my opinion that if the county wants to spend $12,500 for a workshop, that the public and the media should be able to witness this workshop and see what we're paying for. And so it's, I'm just asking that the commission allow the public to attend this workshop. We don't have to say anything. We don't have to interfere. I understand that it's a pretty rigorous, you know, they want a very controlled process. But I think we should be allowed to witness it. I think the Dominion Post should be allowed to report on it and any other local media who decides to attend. And it's just my opinion that this commission's would, I would please ask this commission to open it up to the public and to the media. Thank you very much for your time.
Good. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Any of the students willing to take the chance? Is it your time to ask a question if you want? Okay. Everyone's looking at everyone else. Okay. Seeing none, public portion is now closed. Colleen Kuhn, Grants. And you might want to just quickly explain what you're about to do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, we received the grant contractor agreement with the Department of Transportation for the DUI grant, the Governor's Highway Safety Program. We received $78,500. And you just need to sign that.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been proper moved in second. Allow the president to sign it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Oh, great. Becca Finn Clark, WVU Extension Agent, 4H Youth Development, National 4H Week. I don't know if any of the students are also in this.
Well, I was sitting beside a young lady wearing a 4H shirt.
Fantastic.
So that's perfect. That is perfect. She's a Barber County 4H-er, but still, that's, that's great.
Great.
We're glad to have so many young people. I can use this as a recruitment opportunity too.
Go ahead.
So it's perfect. So happy National 4H Week. As you know, I'm Becca Finn Clark, the 4H Extension Agent in Montague County. I always tell you how much I love my job and what I do. I brought Mary Kearns. You're going to hear from her in just a minute about some of our school programs that we're offering. So I did give you a report. We come twice a year, as you know, sometimes more often, depending on what's going on. But you remember in the summer, we brought some of our 4H campers. We had a great week, great three weeks of summer camp at Camp Muffley. So appreciate your support. If you recall, one of our campers told you all about how much he loved the coleslaw camp. So I think the food was very popular this year. But through 4H, we're reaching, last year, we reached 6,874 youth, the second largest county in the state. Berkeley County's the first, but we don't, I don't agree with the way they count their numbers. They count everybody who comes through the fair and we don't count them. So this is actual youth that we reach through our 4H programming. You'll see the breakdown of how many we reach through our programs. We have a strong community club program. We have great 4H volunteers who give a lot of time and effort to make sure that our youth have a great opportunity at their clubs. We have a club that moved to Trinity, so there's no reason why these young people can't join a club. Actually, Ed's club, She Like Sailors, moved to Trinity. So moving around, trying to get, reach out, get more, more kids involved in any way that we can. You'll see that our highest number is our school enrichment programming. So we did reach last year 3,962 youth through school enrichment programming. I also gave you, I'm not sure that I typically give this to you, but we do have our programs divided by grade levels. So we go to the principal's meeting, we give them this, we ask them if they'll, if they'll please hand this to their teachers so that they can call us. We're booked pretty solidly all the way through the fall and then started, and we're booked pretty much up until April. So a lot of people respect our programs, know what we do, and appreciate what we do. We had, you know, you can see, we had a great 4H camp. We always have, we always max out our younger camp, third through seventh grade. And I think the kids always have a really great time spending the weeks with us. We had Energy Express. A lot of people don't realize that that is a 4H program. So I am responsible for that in the summer as well. It's a literacy program. And we have it in three schools, six weeks, predominantly for low-income youth to help them with their literacy skills throughout the summer months so that they're, they don't fall into the summer slide, as we call it. We had a successful season of fairs. Montague County has a lot of fairs compared to other counties. So there is 4H presence in nearly all of them with youth showing their livestock animals as well as showing their other exhibits of things that they learned. And then just as a, as a special note, I put on there that I did receive a grant from WVU, an internal grant to help us not create. It's a program that's already established called the Moonjar Financial Literacy Program. So we'll take that into the schools. We'll do that at camp. And they get a piggy bank that's three sections, spend, save, and give, so that they learn all three of those things. So how to save for long-term, save, spend, you know, something that they want short-term, and then give. So philanthropy. I hope I didn't steal Mary's thunder because she was going to talk about our school enrichment program. So Mary, come on up, and then I'll finish it out.
Well, thank you for having us.
Good morning.
Really appreciate that. So really excited about the school year. As Becca said, we have some new programs. One of them is the Moonjar that she talked about already. The list that she gave you of the programs that we do, we review it every year. Sometimes we take things off and then we add some new things. So this year, some things that we added was the Moonjars that she talked about. Another one is I'll Bet You Didn't Know It. It explores the food chain and has a hands-on dissection of a owl pellet. So we're really excited about that. We've got several schools that can't wait for us to come and do that. So another one we've brought out this year is called a Breakout Game. So it's based on, promotes team building and problem solving. So if you think about the breakout rooms that they have or escape rooms, that's what it's kind of based on. So we've already got a lot of interest in that. So we're excited about that. Another thing we're rolling out this month for our, is our National Youth Science Day Challenge. We kicked it off yesterday at Mountain View Middle. It's called Code Your World. And we're really excited about it this year. This challenge is put out by National 4H. So this goes throughout the country. And what we're really excited about this year is because WVU Extension had a part in creating this along with Google. So really excited about it. It is a computer, talks about computer science. So it's a four, four parts. One of it actually deals with working on computers in the Scratch program. And the other three parts are what they call hands are.
Unplugged.
Yeah. So they don't have to have a computer to do it. So I'm really excited. Yesterday, like I said, we kicked it off at Mountain View Middle. We had 134 students that we reached. So we're really excited about our programs this year and getting into the schools.
Thank you, Mary. So in summary, we appreciate all your support. You all have been very supportive of 4H. If there's any questions that you have, if there's anything that you request that we move forward on, or if you want to observe anything that we do, of course, you know that you're always welcome. We were one of the six counties that were selected by the USDA to get a civil rights review. So we welcomed a USDA NIFA civil rights gentleman to our county, and he had great positive things to say. If you're interested in demographic-specific data, I'm glad to get that for you. Energy Express data wasn't available, so it's very general. So if you want specifics about volunteers and things like that, I'm glad to supply that to you. And let me think if there's anything else. We're excited, we have an upcoming program at Camp Muffley. We appreciate you allowing us to use Camp Muffley for our programs. We're excited about our new 4H center, as I affectionately call it. So drove by the other day and saw that they're making progress on that, and I think it's going to be a great place for us to continue doing our programs. So thank you so much. Thank you for everything. And if there's any questions, we'll entertain those.
Thank you.
I'd like to at least state that what Mary said, that the children, these are children that are teaching these computer. If you'd elaborate just a little bit on that, please.
Sure. So we have four teens, two go to South Middle, two go to Morgantown High School. And so they are trained to conduct this Code Your World program. So they are going with us to 4H club meetings, to different school programs to help us teach. So it's truly teen-led. They, they were, they're meeting with Googlers. They have phone calls with Googlers to try to learn how to implement this program. And it's really exciting. They were used to film the video, the how-to video for National 4H. So they have been, they love it. Their picture and their video's been plastered pretty much everywhere. So it's really an exciting thing for our youth to, to be involved in that, be leaders. And oh, there was one other thing I wanted to mention. So Ed asked maybe last year or the year before about drug prevention programming. So I wanted to update on that. We do not currently have a curriculum through 4H, but Assistant Superintendent Talarico also asked for drug prevention programming and looked to us to help provide that in the schools. So I addressed that concern to our state-level extension people and our 4H specialists who are supposed to supply us with the curriculum we use to teach. And so hopefully, we'll be having something that we can use to go out into the schools. There's some promise on that. So it's a need. We know that. We're trying to fill that need with high, research-based, high-quality curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becca, for coming. And it's good that all these students are here when you come too.
That's right.
Because they can, maybe you don't know anything about 4H, but maybe you should get involved. I know for the students, my kids are involved, and it's something they look forward to every summer. And one of the students that asked, the student that asked a question, asked a student a question about levies and excess, well, how much of your program is funded by the excess levy? So we have, we're lucky enough in this county to successfully keep passing excess levies, which predominantly funds a lot of extra pay for your teachers at school. I know Trinity, you're a private school, but it pays for a lot of the, part of the salaries. And a lot of these ancillary programs like 4H are funded by that. So as we talk about your, you know, your question about levies earlier, that's, again, these are, this is another example of that process where the excess levy funds a bit of 4H.
Absolutely. We appreciate that, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becca.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thanks for everything.
We now have a proclamation. Is there anyone here to receive from the WVU Alumni Band? If you want to come forward and if you just state your name and your address, and then I will read the proclamation. I'm allowed to read it.
I'm Jerry Clark. I am from Mason Town, Pennsylvania.
And John, since I live at 108 Wedgewood Drive up in Morgantown here, 26505.
Okay. And the proclamation, whereas the West Virginia University Alumni Band works to create an understanding and appreciation for the value of music in our community and the world, and whereas the West Virginia University Alumni Band embodies the excellence and the tradition that proudly represents the state of West Virginia, and whereas the award-winning West Virginia University Alumni Band is equally famous for representing West Virginia as goodwill ambassadors throughout the land and other countries, and whereas Montague County is honored to host the WVU Alumni Band and welcomes the opportunity to witness another outstanding performance by the greatest alumni band in the history of the great state. And now therefore, we, the members of the County Commission of Mon County, West Virginia, do hereby declare Saturday, October 6, 2018, as West Virginia University Alumni Band Day, and encourage all citizens to join with us in honoring the 2018 West Virginia University Alumni Band on this special occasion, adopted this third day of October 2018. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved and second. And just for full disclosure, I am a representative of the WVU Alumni Band for 41 years. So I do want that for disclosure. So with that being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you want to just give a little quick synopsis since you came here? Because people do not really understand about the alumni band and what you do besides the two days. Who wants to go?
The band was formed in 1969.
Yeah. Go ahead. Be at my guest.
With nine people. Saturday, we're marched 350. Friday night will probably be around the same, right, John?
Uh, yeah. Actually, maybe, maybe around 200, 250 or so.
And we don't rehearse. Why not? Saturday morning, we do practice. The Alumni Band also has made six trips to York over the past 12 years or so, where we spend two weeks and play approximately six-day concerts while we're there. Last March, the band went to Pittsburgh and marched in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, where we won the award for Best Senior Group. Commissioner Blum and I did not go. This is my 51st year running down High Street.
Yes.
And it's getting harder and harder. But I love the band. I love taking part with the band. And I've known Commissioner Blum since I was in grad school, and he was a freshman. So that goes a long way back. So if you are involved in band anyway, and you go to WVU and you march with the pride, we'd love to have you in the Alumni Band. And I, we were talking to the, to one of the commissioners earlier, and his daughter is planning going into the band next year, and we're going to hook her right up.
It is truly an honor to be a part of the Alumni Band. And I said, I'm fortunate that I work with, as you know, we do, the percussion section because for anyone who's in the band, they know that the percussion section's a little bit different than everyone else. And it is just a great honor. And, you know, with what has happened now by going outside of the state and playing, we played at the Alumni Basketball.
Oh, that was great.
And hopefully, we do that and so on. But again, for those of you who are in music, we strongly recommend it, whether you go to WVU or any other college, to be a part of something special is, is a great, is something that you cannot give up. It's a great learning experience. And that will be my little PR on that. I have Colleen making copies to give you the original. Thank you so much for coming, and I look forward to seeing everybody Friday night. The one thing you do learn is High Street gets longer as you get older, as you march.
Next year's year 50, of course.
Oh, can we have a picture?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Come on up. That way we can show that to. Oh, good. You got it. Here, come on up. I am very excited about this. I don't know if you can tell, but I, yeah. Yeah. Let me move the chair.
Move the chair.
See, we don't, we don't practice this.
You won't bite, John.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. See you.
A couple days.
See you about 48 hours.
We'll get back to work.
And he is correct. We don't practice until we go down, literally, when we go down High Street is the first time we've played in a year.
You don't know it by now, you're never going to know.
That's right. In one year. So thank you again. I know you have to go back to work.
I don't go back to work.
Okay. We have a, now we have correspondence. Okay.
While I was, while we were gone, it's a notice of an informational workshop for a public meeting on Interstate 79, Exit 153 interchange modifications. The DOH will hold an informational public meeting on Wednesday, October 24, at the Montague County Baseball Park, located at 240 Jorco Drive, Suite 3 in Grahamville, on October the 24th, from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock PM.
Is this the Morgantown Industrial Park access?
This is the new interchange.
No, this is the new interchange, 153. So I think it's modifications to the roundabout and.
Yeah. And we'll get a copy for you for that because I think that would be very interesting. Yes. Okay. So that's the only.
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business. Any unfinished business?
Yeah.
Seeing none, we will go to new business. To consider approving emergency funding for the Mon River Trails Conservancy in the amount of $10,000 for slip repairs to rail trail. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
No, we discussed this last week, and I appreciate, is it Ella?
Yes. Ella Belling.
Came before us. This is emergency funding to, to repair a few of the slips in the rail trail. And the rail trails are a vital, vital part of our community, and I wholeheartedly support, you know, helping, helping them out to get the rail trails back into service.
I agree. It is an economic driver to our area. When it was established many years ago, I know people had questions about it, but you know, the success now and the extensions that we plan on doing with these rails are going to be very important to health and well-being in the community.
Okay. There's been proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain. To consider approval for requisition number nine for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2017A Phase II Project Fund.
Okay, the requisition is in the amount of $252,152.06, and those will be paid out to Adrian Enterprises for project management and stone paving for their excavation contract.
Move to approve?
Second.
Proper move and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To consider for approval requisition number 11 for the University Town Center EOOD Special District Excise Tax Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bond Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
The total amount is $10,472.52, and we have invoices from Municap for their services provided to the district.
Move to approve?
Second.
Proper move and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Uh, to consider for approval requisition number four for the University Town Center Series 2016 TIF Administrative Expense Fund.
The 2016 TIF is the property tax, uh, TIF bonds, and the amount is $15,412.50, and the money will also be paid to Municap for their services to the district.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Proper move and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Consideration to set a date to conduct the, to conduct a public hearing regarding the development plan for the tax increment financing districts established by Mon County Commission in compliance with, with West Virginia State Code 7-11B-15D. If we could have a motion and a second, then I'll ask you to explain.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, could you explain exactly what this is?
Okay. Um, as per the, the tax increment financing statute of the West Virginia State Code, the county commission is required every five years to have a public hearing, uh, once that district is, um, established. So, uh, we have not done a public hearing for quite some time, so we're going to do all four districts that day, and, um, I'm proposing October the 31st.
That date is fine with me. We also checked with our, uh, our bond council yesterday about availability to participate. That date works for them, so I would be fine with that.
Is that during our meeting?
Yes, it will be during your meeting.
Okay, good. So we don't do a separate...
No, and I have to, um, we have to, uh, address or, um, advertise that for four consecutive weeks. So that's why it's, it's a month from now.
Okay. I guess I can't blame my Halloween outfit. Okay. Okay, uh, been properly moved and second to set a date for October 31st. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Do we have any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay. Reports from elected officials. Carrie, do you, uh, let me see, anyone else? You have nothing at this time? Okay, reports from the county commissioners. Ed, you may go first.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Becca's not here. I made, I would like to have made a remark about the picture she posted this morning with crazy fish. But, um, you know, if you happen to see it, uh, her daughter managed to snag a fish at the buckwheat festival, and apparently it has not stopped swimming. So it's either going to exert itself to, uh, extinction, or it will live a long and healthy life. Uh, this is National Celebration of 4-H Week. Uh, if you don't know, uh, I wear my colors proudly, uh, that which I am. I came from a farming family and joined 4-H at eight. I'm still a leader. I do meet at your high school, and I thank you for the time that the, uh, principal has, you know, given us and the rooms that we've been given. But, uh, everything that I have in terms of being able to speak publicly, to be able to address a group, I owe to this particular group and this experience, and so I am deeply indebted. Uh, we met yesterday with the developers, uh, at West Ridge. This is more or less an informational, uh, meeting that we had, basically in light of what has gone on with the road bond passage relative to interchange developments. So I think it was good for all the parties to get the information as to what's going on, uh, what we can anticipate in the future with, uh, with this development with regards to the roads and to Mylan Park. Uh, our meeting yesterday, however, was canceled for the 4-H and extension building. Uh, still, Bobby Doyle and I were both there. Uh, it seems maybe we get our emails a little bit later than other people, but that's okay. Uh, tomorrow is the Farm Bureau banquet, and, uh, if you've never been to Corr Community Center and had a good baked steak, then, uh, I would tell you, uh, come to the community dinners when they have them out there as fundraisers, but I look forward to the fellowship out there with my fellow farmers.
Uh, last Thursday, we had our, um, Mon County Health Department meeting on Thursday. Um, Friday, uh, the Runway Extension Development Team meeting had a, uh, we had, we had teleconference to, uh, discuss, uh, our, uh, benefit cost analysis that we're, we're putting the final touches on to submit to the FAA. So it was a very productive meeting. Uh, also Friday afternoon, I did go to the Buckwheat Festival to, uh, watch my daughter's band, but also to experience the Buckwheat Festival. I can tell you that I still have not eaten buckwheat.
You're not missing anything, sorry.
So half of the bucket list for another year.
Yes.
Um, and Friday night, I also attended the, uh, MHS Muslim football game. Uh, this past week, Monday, I was at the, uh, UHS Band Spectacular at University High School, um, and again, watching all the, the local, uh, bands compete, and, uh, we should be proud of all the, uh, all the schools in our county. Um, as, uh, Commissioner Hawkins mentioned, we had a meeting with the, uh, West Ridge developer yesterday, and I think it was productive meeting, again, to keep on top of what's going on, to keep on top of what had already been in, in progress, and I, I think it was a very, um, it was, uh, we, we, we got a lot of benefit out of that meeting. This morning, I had our IT progress meeting, and, uh, I'm happy to say, we'll talk about more details later, but, uh, things are moving along in regards to the progress with our IT team, that, uh, we're kind of, uh, we're, we're working on our IT infrastructure for the whole county, plus we're also building a, a whole IT team, so, uh, things are really progressing. Um, tomorrow, I have the Mason, or the, um, the Mason Dixon Historical Park, uh, meeting, and I'm gonna go for that to the Farm Bear Pick, and then I'll just be a little bit late. Uh, Friday, I'm happy to announce that, uh, we're, we're gonna have the floss cutting for the Smile Express. That's the, uh, Mon County Health Department's Mobile Dentistry Unit. Now, they've had that, it's, it's been in operation for about two weeks, and the county commission is a, uh, big supporter of this, uh, program. Uh, they want to kind of work out the bugs, and now they're gonna have a floss cutting ceremony on Friday to celebrate, uh, and to, uh, also make people aware. Um, just in two weeks, they've already served over 100 kids that, uh, I think we could assume may not have received dental care, uh, this, this year, so, uh, it's already, uh, reaping benefits. Um, and then Friday night, we have the, uh, as, we'll, I'll go to watch Commissioner Bloom in the, um, WHS, I'm sorry, the, uh, WVU Homecoming Parade. Uh, so, uh, look forward to that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I apologize if you see me doing this. I'm gonna print something out for you all to take with you. Um, and what I'm first gonna do, I'm gonna ask, it was, uh, Daniel, would you be willing to come up here and ask that question again?
Yeah, and I thought...
I thought we'd do all, then all three of us do it before we go on, but then we'll ask that question, and that everyone can see. And Daniel, here's what I'm also gonna make you do. I'm gonna make you stay there, because when you ask a question, I want you to experience what it's like when we're looking directly at you, 'cause it's a little bit different than sitting down. It's a lot easier. So I, I appreciate Daniel for taking the blunt for the entire school. Go ahead.
So, since there have been several proposals recently, such as the levy for a new ice rink at Mylan Park, uh, for new recreation facilities in the county, uh, the question that we bring is, with many of us driving ourselves around town now, how will this, how will these projects affect county infrastructure? And with many of us getting our first jobs and joining the tax base, how will they affect taxes on county citizens?
That's a great question. Who wants to go first? 'Cause I'm gonna hold off. I'm gonna let you guys say first.
It's a great question. There's a lot of variables to that. Um, it depends on what you're, what you're talking about, 'cause there was a number of proposals that came forward, um, and, you know, they, they varied. When we're talking about excess levies, uh, there's a, there's a cap. We already have four excess levies on the, on the books. I'm not sure if you're aware, there's the transit levy, the library levy, the parks levy, and the fire levy. Those levies are already on, on the books, and those, the way, the way it's calculated is, uh, for instance, I'll, I'll pull the transit levy. For every, for every, see, your, your house, when you, when you get a job and you buy a house, you'll start paying property taxes. Uh, so your house is assessed at $100,000, I'm sorry, appraised at $100,000. Then, then you pay taxes on 60% of that. So you take 60% of that $100,000, so 60,000, and then, for instance, the transit, you'll, you'll pay one penny, 1.1 penny for every $100 of assessed value. So you gotta do some calculations there to see exactly how it affects you, and it, and it's wide and it's varied, but it, I would encourage all citizens to, to, to get in, and if you're a numbers guy, you know, to get in and kind of understand how those things are, uh, how those things are calculated, and understand how your taxes are calculated. Uh, you know, and, you know, you, you, usually when people buy their first house or, or buy their first car, and they have to pay taxes to have your car registered, you know, that's usually when people get more involved in how government works, because then that's money that's, comes out of your paycheck, you know, and there's a whole bunch of other things that come out of that. I mean, we, we get a Burt portion, I'm, I'm just talking about excess levies, because you asked about excess levies, you know? Then there's the regular levy that i- is assessed, and there's also the, the county school levy, and then the, then there's a county bond levy for the schools, and then there's a county excess levy for the schools. So there's a lot of different moving parts, so there isn't like one answer. It's kind of, hey, well, how's this one particular proposal affect me? And then we can certainly tell you that, but, okay? I hope that helps.
Now, let's just take, I'm certain Tom's gonna speak on this, but let's just address a little bit about the infrastructure right now, because, uh, in the coming, upcoming months, you are going to see a vast amount of road development improvement that's going to be happening. Uh, you will see the continuation from the roundabout, uh, to the interchange on the mile ground. That's going to be developed into five lanes, where it's currently three. And it's, then will continue to go down and be a four lane, uh, from its, uh, where it is right now. In addition to that, the entirety of, uh, 705 from Stewartstown Road to the Coliseum is going to be worked on. Uh, this is almost exactly at the same time, so two great arteries that are used, to give you an idea, the 705 corridor receives 35,000 cars per day. Uh, so when we look at infrastructure and road improvements that we're, you know, we're in desperate need of, uh, it's coming. The problem is, of course, you're going to be facing all the cones as a new driver, uh, going around, and so I believe Tom's gonna address a new app, uh, that you will make available in this county to have information so that it's given to drivers such as you.
Okay. Uh, first of all, Y was on, and I'm gonna print it out, so you will get the official copy. Um, and it's part of my speech, too. Last Tuesday, we had the road, DOH Road Communications Committee, and there are five major projects starting next week that you're gonna be aware of, um, which would be Mile Ground Airport, as you mentioned, River Road, Patterson Drive Lighting, which is very important, Mon Boulevard, and concrete repairs to West Virginia 705. I will give you copies of this, but this is something that we did want you to be aware of, as you mentioned. Since there is an enormous amount of construction because of the road bond that passed, which is a wonderful, we have 35 projects, besides other projects that are going on, it's gonna cause a lot of confusion. Uh, and I wanna give Donnie Williams full credit. He contacted us. He came up with an idea where there's gonna be an app, and right now, we are beta test, testing it right now. It'll come out in January, where you will be able to go online, on your phone, say you wanted to go from, uh, let's see, I live in Ashton Drive, out to, um, Suncrest. It will show a map of how to get there and what construction is going on at that time. It will also show how much money's being spent, how much is completed, and give you any questions or concerns. So it's an unbelievable app that is only for Montague County. Now, not for the residents, because that means, say, you have family coming in for graduation. Say you, you know, and they wanna know how to get to where you're going, whether it's the Coliseum. You will be able to give that site to those, to family members and/or anyone else, and they will be able to go online. So this is an unbelievable situation. Now, to answer your question, there's a lot of confusion, and I want it clear, and I'm glad we can say this to all of you. One thing I want you to learn, if you learn anything when you leave here, there are all these county roads and state roads. They're called county roads. The county commission is not involved in charge of any road. So when your parent yells at you about being stuck in traffic and blames Sean or Ed or myself, you could say, they're not in charge of any roads. The state is in charge of all roads except the city roads. So I want that very, very clear, and we know how well they're doing. But we do try and work with them, relationship, to try and get the roads fixed. Now, the second thing, when that road bond passed, and this is something that's still going on, and many of you, if you use, I know us old people use Fa- Facebook, but people think that once you pass, look, once you pass the road bond, everyone thinks, oh, there's all this money available. The road bond was for specific improvements or new projects, but by putting the money there, that would free up money down the road for not having to put money in those projects, which would free up the money for repairs. They just, if I'm correct, have they just sold the bonds, or they're about, in the process of selling the bonds? So there is no money yet, except for, if you paid for your driver's license, there was a major increase in fee. And because of that fee increase, and it started in July, there is extra money going around. That is the money that we are using for the slipover on River Road, oh, say, fixing, uh, what's the road, Kingwood Pike. That was extra money that we're being able to use. So again, to your, I'm trying to give you a, a general synopsis. The bottom line is, if you wanna get something improved, and this is the hard part, you're gonna have to put some money into it. And as much as people think our taxes in West Virginia are bad, and they are high in certain areas, we need to put money in, because right now, the only way the money goes for roads, which is unbelievable, is on the gasoline tax, and that hasn't been changed. And what has happened with new cars? You're getting more mileage per gallon, so therefore, you're not getting as much money. So if someone down the road looks like Charleston may raise the gasoline tax, one of the reasons is because the cars are more efficient. So that is basically a general synopsis. I will give you a copy of this. I appreciate you having to stand up there, 'cause I wanted you to know what it's like, and it's, it is awkward, isn't it?
A little bit.
Well, good, and I wanted you to experience that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And as you said, you asked, you asked a kind of interconnected, loaded question, because you asked about your property taxes and your taxes once you, but then you also talked about infrastructure, which largely has to do, is outside of our control. But as you see, we, we gladly take part and communicate with the Department of Highways to try to facilitate those things, but we don't have any power, you know? Their, our only power over is we have the power of this bully pulpit, where we can complain about roads, and then it, it reverberates. But we don't have to do that here. We, we have good communication with the Department of Highways, and again, we talk about that, and we, we give information, and people think we're in control, but just as they said, we're, we're not. And there are interconnected things. Your property taxes don't have anything to do with what, what happens with the roads, unless you're living in the city, and, you know, that's a whole different thing. So anyhow, thank you for coming.
Thank you, really. Appreciate it, thank you. Um, okay, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Clifford.
That's what I was gonna bring up.
I almost forgot, as I was going through this, I thought we were gonna have it, uh, I, I almost forgot about responding to your comments, but I do appreciate you coming forward and, and, and making comments. Uh, it's been our plan all along. Uh, you know, when two of us are together, it's a public meeting, and we have to make sure people are aware of it. So it makes it really hard for us to really do anything. But when, when we have the county commission, we have, uh, a quorum from the cities and stuff like that, it's been, it's been our expectation that it be open to the public, and we make accommodations for the public to be there to, to listen. Um, we're, we're, again, we're still working on the format, and we don't have a say. I mean, we have a say, but the commission's kind of delegated me to be a point person, or they've agreed with me being a point person and the mayor from the city to be a point person to kind of put this together, but we're not, it's, it's not an absolute power. We're working with all the municipalities in regards to what we, what we wanna do, and I tell these students, you know, if you're interested in how your, how your government works, it'd be a great opportunity to go sit and listen to every municipality in the area, uh, talking about things that we can do to work together, because one thing you will find is there's a lot of silos. You know, you have this city, you have this city, you have this city, and then you have the county, and then you have the state, and you don't always find everybody working together. And that was the whole point of this workshop, is, you know, we know, there's a lot of times we know we disagree on things, but let's just focus on what we can agree on and, and work together and, and have better bang for our buck, have collaborative-ish things where we can, you know, there's already examples of things that we do collaboratively. What are some more things that we can do collaboratively? And to your question about transparency, I do appreciate you coming forward. You had put forward a FOIA request with us. That was the first time I've been FOIA'd since I've been on the office. It's actually informed me that we had some kinks to work out in our process, and basically, as, as a result of you FOIing us, um, and, and me looking at the process and, and talking amongst ourselves, we're working on a new, a, a real generalized format to, to respond to FOI's, so that it's quicker, and it's, it's, it's convenient, and there's not confusion about what, you know, the, the cost and stuff. So I do appreciate you coming forward and asking questions. And we are transparent. I mean, we're the first county in the state to launch the opengov dot website.
Right.
Uh, we can go in and look at how we're spending, and we've only, we, we launched at 8.1, and we're already going into an upgrade, where we're trying to make the information better, because some of the information is out there, and it's, you know, you can be transparent and throw thousands of pages of documents out there. We're trying to put it out there and provide some summary and some, some clarification to tell you what you're looking at. So everybody can be transparent and just throw stuff out there, but we're trying to make it usable and stuff that, things people would wanna come to. So we are, we try to be very transparent in that regard.
Can I ask for a brief suspension of the rules, so I haven't explained the open meeting laws to the students involved?
That's fine with me. Yeah, go ahead, that's fine. Go right ahead, I appreciate it. Stand up and come on up. I appreciate you doing that, 'cause I was gonna try and explain what a FOI is, I'd rather you do it.
So, so West Virginia has what's called an Open Meeting Act. Uh, and what basically happened is, back in the 70s, um, you couldn't ask the government for information.
on up. I appreciate you doing that, because I was going to try and explain what FOIA's I'd rather you do.
So West Virginia has what's called an Open Meeting Act. What basically happened is, back in the seventies, you couldn't ask the government for information. You would, you could ask them, you know, hey, I want to see this correspondence, and they could just say no. And so what happened is, activists started putting forth these things called Sunshine Laws, which basically means, if I ask for information that's a public record, the, there are requirements of which kind of public records I have to receive. Now, West Virginia has an Open Meetings Act, which means, when these guys get together, it's considered an open meeting. They have to announce it beforehand, they have to publish minutes, and they have to allow the public to attend. Now, the one thing that I will disagree with Mr. Secor about, and this is actually complimentary to this commission, is there's exceptions to this act. For example, if they get together for training purposes, which this could be considered, or social events, for example, if three of them show up at a party together, that's not automatically a meeting, and that's a big confusion that we see a lot. Even the people in the government think that that happens. They're like, we can't show up at a barbecue together, because a meeting's going to happen, and we're going to get in all sorts of trouble. But that's not the case. If they get together for social training, there's a few other exceptions. They, it's not considered an open meeting, and it doesn't have to meet those requirements. Technically, this meeting probably doesn't have to meet the open meetings requirements, and they could have it in secret. However, this commission, and Mr. Secor in particular, just said, we want it to be open to the public, which is a correct idea. But the fact is, they're not required to. They're doing this as basically a courtesy to the public, and to show that they are transparent. And that's one of the things I really believe in, is people should be able to get information from the public. I did a FOIA request, it's called Freedom of Information Act, which means I send a request saying I want these specific documents. They have five days to reply to me, and five business days, and say, we're going to give you these documents, we're not going to give you these documents. You know, it basically explained to me exactly what the situation is. A lot of the times, the response is, we need time to get this all together, and they can extend that. For example, WVU sometimes takes months to reply to FOIA requests, because there's just so much information the university has that they just can't organize at all, and they have to screen out certain things. For example, if an attorney like me talks to a client, it's privileged. So if I send an email to somebody, to a client, it's privileged, which means I can't reveal that to the public. The client can reveal it to the public, but it's not part of the FOIA request. And so they have to look at each individual email and screen out all those privileged issues. And WVU as well has educational laws. For example, I can't see what a student got as a grade on a paper if I'm, you know, doing a request to a WVU professor. So they have to look at each of those emails and individually screen them out. It takes a lot of time, it's a lot of work. WVU has a large team of attorneys who actually deal with this every day. So that's just what I wanted to explain about the open meetings laws, and it's something that, you know, as future citizens, you might want to know, you know, if there's something that you think is happening, or you want more information about, you can send this request to any government agency, and they have to respond to you. Thank you very much.
And I just want to point clarification. We don't disagree. I was being literal.
Yeah.
I hold myself to a higher standard. If we're somewhere, I try to make sure that we don't talk about business. That's the.
That's the hard part.
Yeah, we're going to be places together, you know, we're going to run into places together, but I just try to hold myself to a higher standard and make sure that we're not discussing business.
Thank you. One other comment. I happened to watch last night your questions that you asked the city council. Without going into specific detail, I plan on asking those questions, because they disturb me. As a former city council member, I believe they need to be answered, and I will bring them up at that meeting. So I just want you to know, I was very disappointed that none of the city council members responded to very legitimate questions, and that's all I will say at this time. Again, as I said, last Tuesday, we did meet, we had the conference on the communications. We sent this out this week. This is as much information as possible on the roads. We will be continually doing that. Next Tuesday morning, we've been invited at eight o'clock for an empty bowls meeting at eight o'clock at Mon Hospital. Nine o'clock is the drive meeting, and you had talked about, well, Becca talked about drug opioid. This is the countywide program that is working, all different groups coming together. That will be at the Marriott Courtyard, and that will be point blank. The number one issue and problem in this county is drug abuse and opioid use. It affects whether, I'm sure you know, an individual, a friend, a family member, or like us, we're trying to bring in businesses, and you have a problem where they can't pass the drug test. So it is something that we all are going to have to work on, and we can't be quiet about, and this commission has been adamant on working on solutions, and I really appreciate that. I'm making sure I covered everything. Oh, I do want to thank Mrs. Ridgway. Where are you? If you want to just stand. Thank you so much. For you all don't realize, but as a teacher to organize this, to get the bus, to actually show up the bus, to get here on on time, is more than your normal teacher, and I personally want to thank you. After thirty-four years as a guidance counselor, I know what it's like to do, and the field trip, this is so much more important than reading about it in a book, and I thank you. I also will say that this class, I know, has to volunteer, and I am in charge with Rourke's Osmo of the Parentry Plus More Program, and we are planning to use you to work, and you're going to learn about food insecurity. We're going to have you go over and work in the supply room for five hours, and that appears to be what we're going to do. So that's down the road, so we're looking forward to that. And finally, some real positive news that I'm going to ask. Is there anybody who runs track here? Great. I don't know who your coach is, but before you leave, if you could give me his or her name, because we are going to have, and this is just out, a ribbon cutting ceremony and open house at the new track and field aquatic and track center at Mylan Park on Friday, October twenty-six. The ribbon cutting is at ten-thirty, and I'll send this to everyone, and the community, just came out yesterday. The community open house will be from three-thirty to six-thirty. I love the road. The road is eighteen thirty-five Fitness Way. But you are going to be, in the springtime, we are going to have an eight million dollar track, the best facility east of the Mississippi. This thing is unbelievable, and it is going to be open for the public. We want the high schools to use it, and that's what we're planning on doing. This commission is adamant on making sure this is open on time, and I really want to thank my fellow commissioners, because this has been a four-year process, and they've agreed to continue it, and it is a community track. I don't even want to go about the pool, but this is the track. This is what I'm most excited about. So I will, we will make that public. I will ask for your name, so we can send you a letter, because the good news is, now, I don't know, we're off, well, the public's off school. Do you have school that day? It's the day after the Barilla Football Game. I don't know if you have school now. I know the public school system is out, but if not, I will make sure that you're able to, well, I will ask for you to come, because I think it's very important that all the community comes. Is there anything else I know? This is probably the longest meeting. It's fifty-eight minutes, but I'm thrilled you're here.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We are now adjourned.